I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'll ask, give you an opportunity to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Rick Evans will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you again, Lord, for bringing us here safe tonight. We pray that you will lead and guide us in the business decisions. I don't tonight, Lord. Pray that you will touch each citizen in the city of Springdale and all of our workers in the city of Springdale. Keep them safe with school starting back, Lord, and the universe starting back. Pray that you will keep us all safe on our trip back home tonight, in your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, I'd like to let everyone know we have large print agendas over here. Bill, do you have them? Right there by Bill Mock. And if that would be helpful to anyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting, Springdale City Council, Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. And we will begin things by asking our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J Cox.
And Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We're at item four of the agenda. This is the portion of the meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If there are any folks in the room who would like to address or address an issue, I guess that's not on tonight's agenda, because we won't, we won't deal with anything or take any action on anything you have to say tonight as far as during this part of the meeting. So if there's anyone who would like to, to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes, council. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to look over those minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
If none, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
A and B, second.
We have a motion and a second for options A and B. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
Thank you. Item seven, finance committee reports and recommendations. Finance Chair is Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. We met as a finance committee last Monday night, and the first resolution that was presented to the committee was a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the Walton Family Foundation for the realignment of the Razorback Greenway crossing Emma Avenue and public space and entering into an agreement with McClellan Consulting Engineers, Inc., for design services for the project. That resolution was forwarded to the council by the committee with recommendation for approval.
Will the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
Second item before the finance committee that night was the continued discussion about location for the animal shelter. And that resolution was also forwarded to the council by the committee with recommendation for approval. The title of that resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Property Located at 3601 Don Tyson Parkway, Springdale, Arkansas."
Okay, thank you, Jeff. There has been some changes in the numbers that, and I'm going to open that up for discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the resolution passes but to amend the amounts listed in that resolution to make a change from 314,000 to 300,000, and from the amount of 236 to 225,000.
And that makes the total purchase price a difference?
It would be 525,000, subject to an appraisal.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the property at 3601 Don Tyson Parkway. We'll certainly open it up for any comments now. Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Steve Lyle. I'm here on behalf of the Walnut Grove Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. I know that Mr. Iker, who's with me here tonight, and some of the administrators and staff had a chance to talk to the committee as a whole. So I won't restate everything that was, that was brought forward that night, but I do want to, and I want to thank a lot of the council members for speaking me, about, speaking to me about this, because I just got on board on Friday, and I've done a, you know, crash course in this, in this site and this project, and I appreciate you talking to me. I just want you to know that, that we have a very real and genuine concern, and it's, it's not an irrational concern, about the development of this site as an animal shelter. As a, as a citizen of Springdale, I'm, I'm very proud of, of the plan for, you know, a state-of-the-art humane animal shelter. That's not the question in our minds. You know, the city does have a need. It looks like the need that you're trying to address is caring for about 80 or so dogs and an equal number of cats with the large budget item, four and a half, 4.7 million dollars. But my folks at Walnut Grove have a very strong need too. They care for up to 100 human beings that can't take care of themselves, and they have a responsibility to 135 or so employees to make sure that this, that this business venture works out. And to make, just so you know, the, the very real concern we have, it's not, and that it's not an irrational concern, I asked Dr. John Kendrick to come. Dr. Kendrick is the medical director for the facility, and I think that he can hopefully shed some light on why the, the operators of this facility feel the way they do, because they rely on folks like Dr. Kendrick every day to, to meet the needs of these folks. Dr. Kendrick, would you mind?
Thank you. I am John Kendrick. For those of you that don't know me, I know quite a few people here, actually. And I thank you for letting me talk. My remarks will be brief. I am the medical director there at Walnut Grove and have been for several years. Dressed like this tonight because I just came from the home. We're, have a lot of people to check on. I wanted to be sure the council was really understood what this nursing home or does. It's more than just a nursing home. First of all, we have a skilled nursing facility there, where we care for up to 20 patients who have just been discharged from the hospital. Northwest, Washington Regional are the two primary places, but we get them elsewhere as well. These people have just had heart attacks, they've had major heart surgery, they've had major belly surgery, a lot of them have broke their hips. They have diabetes that's out of control, they have chronic obstructive lung disease or emphysema, can barely breathe. These are extremely sick people, and they're usually there on our watch for about two weeks while they recover from their conditions and do physical therapy. And these people, I don't know anything about your dog deal, but these people need peace and quiet, just like people in a hospital need. I see no difference. Also, our facility has a memory unit or dementia unit. It's just for women. I just left that unit. We have 16 patients there, and I have a big picture window that looks right out where your proposed facility will be. These people, if you've ever met anybody that's demented, which I'm sure you have, because they're everywhere, these people don't know what's coming, what's real, what's not real. They're very impulsive, they're easily startled, have poor balance, they fall, we have major falls, three or more a week. They fall and break their hips, they fall and hit their head, get blade, brain bleeds, they're just anything that might startle them. They don't know what's going on, they're impulsive, they'll get up, move about, do the wrong thing. We watch them very closely there, but it's still a difficult task. The rest of the home is filled with people who cannot care for themselves, who generally cannot walk, they're wheelchair-bound. Many of them are demented as well, they're just not as far gone as the ladies we have in the, in a memory unit. They're also extremely ill. I have a nurse practitioner that works there every day, sick call, we do 12 to 15 people a day there that are sick. So it's a busy place, and these people need peace and quiet. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions if y'all want to know about our facility. I'm not a politician, so I can't give you any political answers here, but I can give you all the medical answers you want, so.
All right. Thank you, John. Anyone have questions for Doc? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I follow up a comment?
Well, may I?
Okay.
My mother-in-law is one of those 16 people. They lived with us for 19 years. I have one question for you people. Any, any, John Benir, any of you have a member in your family with Alzheimer's?
My, yes.
Any?
My, my late mother had it, yes.
My mother died of Alzheimer's, and my dad took care of her for as long as he could. But in Audrey's case, Audrey Hansel is a resident at the nursing home, and he is right. Just any kind of sound sets him off. Today, you're Kathy. Tomorrow, you're not anybody. Tomorrow, you're Doug, but it might be someone from the third grade. I can, I can't imagine what's going to happen when the concrete trucks start backing up and making deliveries at 6 o'clock in the morning. It's going to be a problem. These people will lose it. She's fallen, she's broken her ankle. All I'm asking for is your understanding. You've got other properties in the city limits of Springdale. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and from talking to you, I think all of us, we've all, when we've talked, we've all had someone touched by Alzheimer's or dementia, or, you know, an elderly person. These are the elderly and frail people that have been entrusted to our care. You have to assume that the, the nursing facility, it's, like Dr. Kendrick said, it's the sickest of the sick. We have to ask these questions. What kind of caregivers would we be if we didn't know what was coming in next door? And it's not just that the families have entrusted these folks, but the state and federal governments. I was out there today. The state auditors were there, they were there till 8 o'clock last night, they were onsite today. And one of the things they look at in building a facility is that you can't build next to anything that's going to have noise, or possibility of insects, or anything that's going to be a nuisance to the residents. And they come in, and rightfully so, they regulate, because these folks are bed-bound, and they want to make sure everybody's being taken care of. So we have to ask these questions, and I would submit to you, you have to ask them too. You, what kind of caregivers are you of your citizens if you don't know exactly what the impact is going to be? And I'm not, I don't, I don't mean we can guess, we need to know more, and here's, and I've done my best to find that out over the last couple of days. If you take, take one of those and pass it around, this is the only document that I've been led to about what we can expect on the, from the facility, the animal shelter. And, and it, it goes through great detail about, I mean, like I say, it's a state-of-the-art facility, there's no question. And it's going to be a great place, one, a facility like this would be a great place for the care of animals. I don't see anything in here that relates to the care of the humans next door. That's my concern, because when I talk to you, I know everybody here, and I know nobody here would intentionally harm these residents, don't get me wrong, I don't believe that for a second. I think that you may unintentionally harm these residents, and that's what I'm concerned about. If you, if you read through the report, now, a lot of this report just has to do with the feasibility of the project, because it is a 4.7 million dollar project, and that's a lot of money. And I know that, that when you spend that money, you want it to work for its intended purpose. And so like, if you look on page 12, it talks about, you know, we want it to be a visible location. It also talks about how it's a 10-year plan. Now, the one thing I have to point out to you is that this entire study was done for the JB Hunt site. There's not an existing study that I've been able to find that has to do with the Don Tyson site. In fact, my folks didn't even know this was a possibility until about three weeks ago. And I know you've worked on it for a long time, there's a lot invested, but there's not a lot invested in this site. There's a lot invested in the, in the budget, there's a lot invested in the need, and I know there's been a lot of investigation into other sites, but I just don't think that we've had the investment into this site. This site is not, first of all, when you talk about feasibility, it's not as visible as the JB Hunt site. It does not. On page 14, it talks about anticipated phase two development. My understanding of this site, it does not allow itself to go beyond 10 years of use because of the topography of the property. It sharply slopes away from the planned footprint. And one of the key things in this study, now, again, this was a study that related to JB Hunt, but on page 15, when it talks about accessibility, and this is a quote from the study, "It's important that the animal shelter be centrally located to the area it serves. If the shelter were located in a far corner of the jurisdiction, the driving time may be lengthy and people will be less likely to use the shelter. That long drive would mean people will be, being less likely to come back to look for lost pets or visit for adoptions." Then it goes on to describe how JB Hunt site is a good site. If you look at the map, where it's on page 16, where it plots the JB Hunt site, you see that it is centrally located. It's the one right in the middle of the map. If you sort out where Don Tyson location would be, it's down in that green space, down around Lake Fayetteville, which is in the far southeastern section of the jurisdiction, which this report specifically says is not a good idea. Page 17, it talks about topography, and it says, "Each potential site should be examined to make sure the slope across the site will allow for proper drainage and there's a place to drain water to. Waters, however, sites with excess, excess slope should be avoided if possible." We haven't, we don't see an evaluation of the Don Tyson site and the sloping that it has. Now, of course, the main reason I'm here, you know, you have to decide the feasibility, and I know that you will do your best to do that, and those are some issues that I saw here, but is the sound. When we talk, when I talk about this, and I know, again, I genuinely believe that you do not want to harm these sick residents. But what all I'm told is that when this thing is built, it will be state-of-the-art, there will be no concerns. I don't have any doubt it's state-of-the-art, but I don't see anything in the report and the design that shows that it's, it's going to prevent noise traveling to this adjacent property. There's a lot in here about how sound control measures should be taken. If you look on page 21, it says that. If you look on, but if you look in the exhibits where it talks about the build-out cost, there's not a single mention of sound screening barriers, you know, anything that's going to do to prevent things that are good for dogs, like an outside exercise area. If you have 85 or more dogs circulating through an outside exercise area, how do you prevent the noise from those dogs from traveling to the adjoining property? If you look at your site plan that you've been provided, I don't see anything on there. I don't see anything to show a barrier that would prevent, and the outside, indoor/outside kennels, again, a good, a good care facility, but how does the outdoor, how do you screen the sound of the outdoor dogs from someone who may be highly, who will be highly susceptible to stimulus in a, in a mental care unit? We don't see that here, and in fact, we don't even see anything like you might require of a private developer as far as screening. Now, I've heard general conversations that some things will be done, but I just don't see it. And so we don't see anything that would show a sound barrier, vegetative barrier, berm between the properties. Maybe there's one planned, but it would be helpful for us, and it would allay our concerns if we knew what it was going to be specifically. How tall is it going to be? What's it going to be made of? How, has there been any kind of assessment to show that it will work? You know, and so that's where we are. We, we just, we need to know what is going to be specifically done to protect this, this nursing care facility and the residents. Think about, I know you're well-intentioned, what if it doesn't work? What if you put 80 dogs out there and it causes a problem? What if we start having issues with patients? What if the state comes in and says, "This is not workable"? Then what? I mean, I think we need to think beyond just the plan, but, but the contingency plan, because we all share in that risk. Our folks, of course, have a huge stake, millions of dollars invested, and 135 jobs and all the folks that they're caring for, but you have an investment too, not just in the, in the dog shelter, the animal shelter, but you have a stake in our outcome as well. I mean, if you have a well-intentioned plan that doesn't work, it's no different than if you have a well-intentioned drainage structure that doesn't work and it floods the adjoining property. It's the same issue. So we, we share that risk, and we, we want you, we just ask you, why can't we get a specific site study before you spend 4.7 million dollars on this site? And why can't we get included in that some specific safeguards for our frail and elderly people next door? We've only known of this for a few weeks. In fact, I don't know, from what I hear, I don't know that this council has known of this site for more than a few weeks. And I know it's a longer-term project, but we're just talking about this site tonight. I think if nothing else, let's take some time and sort out this site. Thanks.
Oh, let me address just a couple of points. Steve, thank you. And we did all find out about this site just about the same time. But many of the, many of the questions that you have cannot be answered until we have a site chosen so that the design can go forth. We know that there will be screening needed, we know there will be issues that we need to address, and that will all be taken care of if this site is approved. That will all be taken care of when the large-scale development comes forward, and those kinds of things will be addressed. We have said from day one that if this site is chosen, we will work with the, with the staff at the, at Walnut Grove and make sure that we try and address every possible concern. But I would challenge any of you to go out to the current animal shelter, park outside, and see what you hear. This nursing facility could be next door to our current animal control, animal, animal shelter, and I, and as you heard, my, I went through this with my mom. I understand the concerns, but I don't believe that, that there would be a concern even next door to our current shelter. So that's just my thought, I'm just trying to answer some of your, your questions, but I want to assure everyone in the room that if this shelter goes forward, there will be plenty of opportunity to discuss where those screening walls need to be, how tall they need to be, what kind of landscaping, what kind of, if there are burms involved. We're open to all of that, and we want to try and address any concerns, and we'll, if this is the site, we'll work with, with the, with the management, with the staff at Walnut Grove, and do everything we can to make it work for everybody, and assure them that, that we've taken every, every step possible to minimize and mitigate any concerns. That's all I can do at this point, because we don't have a design yet. We've got a, we've got a proposed layout, which is, we've got everything for this site that we have for JB Hunt. Sure, yeah, go ahead. And then, and then certainly, we're going to, we're not closing it down, any of y'all can comment.
I, I agree with you on the current animal shelter to an extent, but I'm not sure that being next to the current shelter wouldn't be better. I mean, the, the new shelter is better for dogs with outdoor exercise facilities and things like that, but I'm not sure it's better for neighbors. And the other part to that is how can you approve this site with an open-ended, you have a set budget, but you're talking about approving the site with an open-ended remediation plan to protect the surrounding locations, and I think that's, that's the problem. I'm afraid, our concern is you approve the site, you've got a fixed budget, you don't have enough in the budget to, to do all the things that might be needed after we sit down and scientifically figure out what those things are. So that, that would be our concern.
Sure. Yeah, anyone, if, if anyone has anything to say, feel free to come up and just please state your name and, and address again.
My name is Philip Moran. I live at 6006 Dancing Rabbit, Springdale, in Founders, near Founders Park. I've been a resident, citizen of the community for three years. I moved here three years ago from Farmington, New Mexico, retired from the city of Farmington, and upon my retirement, I was mayor-appointed to be a chairman of the Regional Animal Shelter Foundation, where we were to start to work directly with the city in location, materials that were purchased for this, for the new shelter, the design promotion in the community. This, this, I can understand the questions that are, that were brought up, and, and these are questions that can be answered, they can. And it does take a process of getting architect involved and, and landscaping, certainly, you know, issues like birmingham can be incorporated without much expense, if, if any, and the landscaping. But the success of our, of the animal shelter, that I was there for three years during its operation, there was never a complaint that, that we heard, and we, we were in, into the daily operations, working with the director there at the animal shelter, making sure that everything is going the way it should be, the way the shelter was designed. We had an amazing turnout of, of community that may, many were naysayers of having an animal shelter, and the money spent on the animal shelter, but it ended up being truly a pride and joy of the community, much, much different than an animal pound that many of us can visualize as, as example of animal caregiving. We had, we, we didn't have any issues with barking in the, in the neighborhood, and dogs getting loose never became an issue. And this is, this is not what can happen, but this is our history with the animal shelter that I worked with the foundation, directly with the operations of the foundation, of the animal shelter in Farmington, New Mexico, and still in contact with them the last three years, because I'm, it's near and dear to me that this, this facility run as it should be to respond to the needs of the community. Basically, that's all I want to say, but, and I have been to Walnut Grove to visit a patient you have there, that family's been very pleased and, and hope it doesn't happen anytime real soon, but if, if I have to be placed in a facility, you have, you have, that's going to be my new address, so, just had to say, yes.
Please, please, please come up to the, my, well, we, the city watches this, so we'd like for everybody to, that has comment to be on the record. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kenny Patton. I'm the business office manager for five and a half years at Walnut Grove. I just wanted to ask him, he said he had no problems with dogs getting out. Did you have any problems with people dumping animals, especially sick animals, after hours that might have got loose? Because I live in Rogers, and we've had that problem in Rogers.
We did not, but it was all incorporated in the design of the building, so that would not be an issue. This, this facility is, I understand, will have a Sally Port, and, and when they have drop-offs, in the case of, of animals being picked up by animal control... drop-offs, in the case of, of animals being picked up by animal control, the process will be to close the door before animals are released from the truck.
Okay. I'm like saying like at 11 o'clock at night, if someone has, I don't know, a sick dog, a sort, some sort maybe got dumped in their neighborhood and they're not a dog person and they know it's sick and they don't know what to do, you know, they might just drive up, park in Walnut Grove parking lot or in the animal shelter and take, and dump, dump or dump some kittens that was born at your house. So you never had that problem?
We did not.
Okay.
We did not. I have to answer your question.
We, we can't say it.
Yeah.
It could never happen, just like any crime, because that would be a crime.
I know it's quite a problem in Rogers.
That would be a crime and, and we'll certainly have video surveillance and, and be able to, at least we'll be able to catch whoever does it if they do.
That was my concern.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good question as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jeff.
About the motion. I thought I heard you add at the end of the motion, Kobe's subject to an appraisal.
Yes. Correct.
Okay, so it's different from what's in the actual resolution.
Right.
So, so.
That has changed and we're adding the, the stipulation that it, that it appraised.
Have to vote on the amendment first before we vote on the resolution.
Do we?
Yep.
So the, you're saying the amount's changed and the appraisal's changed?
The amount has been reduced and the, and, and we have the contingency in there that the property would appraise.
Either they have to vote on or just by mutual agreement that the resolution's changed. So anyone wants it formally?
I mean, we do it all the time without voting on it. What do you think, Ernest? Do we need to have a separate vote?
No, the, the motion was as stated with the new numbers and the subject to appraising for that amount.
Right.
So that's what you're voting?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I still favor piece of property that the city already owns. Not sure I favor going out and buying additional land when we already own land, so that's my only opposition to this piece of property.
Yeah.
I mean, there's concerns, don't get me wrong, but I think we have an appropriate spot that we could use now.
Okay. Any other comment?
Mayor, would it also be understood that we would do something similar to what we were proposing to do for Huntsville, where if this were to praise above the asking price, that we would be able to do a, a letter?
Yeah, if the, if the property owner requests that, then I, I don't see any negative to that. Certainly, we'd be willing to, to, to provide them a letter for, for their purposes.
If it appraises for more, you mean?
Hmm?
If it appraises for more?
If it appraises for more, whatever that difference is.
That's, that's subject to the contract, really has nothing to do with this resolution.
Right.
No.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then I'll call for the vote.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 7-1.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, Chairman. And we will, we will stand true to our word and we will work with you all as we move forward, as we go through the process of large scale and the design of the building. We'll certainly, certainly work with you any way we can to address any concerns. Thank you. All right, we're at item eight, Street and Capital Improvement Committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Been meeting last week at Street and City IP, we've got three resolutions on the agenda tonight and all of them were brought to the council records for approval. And the first one is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for assessment of Fitzgerald Station and the farmstead. Matching grant.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Carry 8-0.
And next we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for architectural services, initiative for Rabbitfoot Lodge and 9.2% of the construction cost, so we'll know the estimate's around 640 for us now, but.
Okay.
Further resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Carry 8-0.
All right. Next one, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, at 3378 Bryan Street.
Party passes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments from the council, questions? Is there anyone in the audience that needs to address this property? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
I would be adopted.
Second. Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.[1792.12]